The Enfield Town Council Special Meeting. Today is Wednesday, April 6, 2022. It's 5:30 p.m. in the council chambers. Sheila Rolcall.
Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Here.
Mayor Crisati.
Here.
Councilor Despard.
Here.
Councilor Finger.
Here.
Councilor Hopkins.
Here.
Councilor Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Mangini.
Here.
Councilor Pisner.
Here.
Councilor Santinella.
Here.
Councilor Ungeyer.
Here.
It's 10 members present and unabsent.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we will be having the budget presentation by the town manager, Ellen Zapusasau. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. It's in accordance with the town charter, it's my pleasure to present to you tonight the Proposed Fiscal Year 22-23 Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Plan for the Town of Enfield. This budget outlines a proposed balancing strategy that addresses the community's immediate service needs while positioning Enfield to restore services and evolve as an economic recovery continues to take shape through the pandemic. So I think it's important, again, as we come to the close of what has been a very difficult two years, that we note the efforts of town staff. When people look back on the pandemic, it's my hope that they don't look at it as the struggle, but as one of resilience and the fact that we came through it, both with perseverance and achievement in what was a very difficult time. And while we mourn the loss of the 83 Enfield residents who have died, we appreciate the efforts of the many departments who worked tirelessly to ensure that critical services were maintained. So the important lesson, I think, is that of resiliency, and it's one that we can really use through all the departments. Many changes and adaptations were made, and these conversations about technology improvements and best practices are continuing, and we actually have a slide dedicated to that in tonight's presentation. Issues such as the digital divide, which the Board of Education worked to overcome, has spawned discussions about broadband, and the community is now more aware of food and security issues than we were before the pandemic. Issues such as diversity, equity, and inclusion are also major topics as a result of the social and racial injustice conversations that happened during that pandemic as well. My office, in conjunction with the Director of Finance, John Wilcox, and the department heads, will keep all of these items in mind while we're monitoring the budget and evaluating the opportunities to share resources, both with the Board of Education continuing that trend, as well as with other community partners, as we pursue economic and community growth for the grand list. Some of the facts that I'd like to open with, in terms of a grand list summary, that was prepared by the Office of Assessor Tax Collector. The good news for Enfield, the taxable real estate of the grand list increased by $549,813,710. The 2021 grand list year was also the revaluation year, as we all know. The increase in market value played a substantial role in the increase of residential values. Also, all of the farm 490 parcels were visited, photos were taken, and parcels were updated based on the use of the land. Quadrennials were filed, and certain organizations came in in order to ensure their files were complete. Those who filed applications were reviewed, and currently, as we sit here, the Board of Assessment Appeals is doing their work to hear from residents downstairs. Overall, the business personal property increased $42 million. There are also 230 deleted accounts, and our main taxpayer, Connecticut Light and Power, which you will see, our new top 10 taxpayer list is now at the top. That account increased by $3.5 million. There are also some new companies that gave us an increase of $13 million, including Wooden Tap, Starbucks, and a new company, Code Generation Interconnect, affiliated with CLMP for the solar farm assessment, was at $4 million. Nutmeg Solar Farm Assessment of the $29 million, which was an increase, is also placed on personal property, but there is a tax stabilization agreement in place for that particular solar farm. On the motor vehicle side, the grand list reflects an increase of $93 million in net assessed value. Motor vehicles are valued using the NADA value, and each year, the DMV provides a data file listing, all the vehicles registered to addresses in Enfield. So for the 2021 grand list, I thought you would be interested to know that there was an increase in 523 vehicles. So, to talk about the increase. This is the first year that the Assessor's Office utilized the VIN decoder, a program utilized by assessors in the state to help identify vehicles, by linking the VIN number to the information provided by the DMV. There have also been, as many of you know, numerous articles published across the country about the increase in value of used cars. They were up over 37% as supply constraints affected that market. The average used car price tops $27,000 for the first time, and buyers have paid above the MSRP rate 80% of the time on a new vehicle compared to 3% last year. So those were factors that definitely came into the revale. Again, all of this that we're talking about, in terms of our grand list growth, the need to fund our services, the Board of Education presentation that you saw Monday night, and the CIP list, is all now also going to be viewed through this budget process with a new lens, and that is the receipt of the $13 million that Enfield is receiving through the American Rescue Plan Act. The opportunities to make transformative changes here in Enfield with these funds, juxtapositioned against the backdrop of existing projects on the CIP list that we can now leverage funding for, and from a scheduling perspective, maybe do sooner, is really going to be a great thing for Enfield. But most importantly, ARPA is a benefit to the residents, because without this infusion of money for one-time projects, the burden to pay for these would have fallen to the taxpayers. Our intent will be to leverage and stretch all of these resources for maximum benefit. So, as we begin, I would like to caution you, any of the taxpayers who are watching from home, to understand that there are many things that are in flux tonight, and as we talk about the proposed mil rate, there are ample opportunities to change it. And so, keep that in mind, because we have lots of things that are in flux. So, we're going to start with just a little bit of a recap, which, as you see in your presentation from Monday night, we are showcasing what the fiscal year was adopted, that we're currently in, what we're proposing, and the value change. So again, very raw numbers here, so it's my hope that nobody leaves tonight and says, "Oh, my goodness, the budget is growing by 3.14%," very fluid right now. Again, as I referenced, there are so many pieces to this. Pieces include ARPA, they include other sources of funding, they include our relationship with regional entities like CROG, which are bringing money into the community through lots of funding, as well as some other grant opportunities that we've realized, and other ones that we're looking to go after. So again, multiple pieces of a puzzle to create that financial piece. I will defer to our Finance Director on this slide. It's really another great summary, in case anybody has any questions about it, but he may want to point out the health insurance, which is different than last year.
Yes, some of the, we've had meetings with our health insurance consultants. There was a 3% increase. We budgeted a 3% increase in rates, which is down, for the 2022 budget, we had a 15% increase. But the historical usage has not warranted such an increase for this year, so we're at The actual amount budgeted across the entire town is actually around zero because of people making changes to their options. Maybe we brought in some new staff that are at single rather than a family plan, or had changed from family to employee plus one. All of those changes are encompassed into this budget, and the result is, we had actually no increase in our health insurance for this year. We did have a couple of union contracts that settled earlier this year. I believe the Teamsters and the EMS contract. Those generated some budget increases that will take effect into this year's budget. Our bond principal and interest payments, they increased by another $206,000 this year. I'm not sure, without looking, I'd have to see where, I have it all scheduled out for future years, so I could get any information that you would like. And then, as Chief Fox noted the other night, the police accountability bill has caused an increase in where our budget would be by another $273,000. That's almost a million dollars' worth of required changes that we had to absorb in this year's budget.
So again, talking about all of the pieces of the puzzle, the unknown variables that we're continuing to evaluate, some of which you heard about Monday night, which is the potential inclusion of the Board of Education in the Alliance District. That will facilitate a change in how the ECS is calculated and how it's delivered to the city with a carve-out to that Alliance funding. There is also appeals, as I mentioned, happening downstairs, and other grants in flux. A lot of mandates are reflected on here, as well as some funding that continues to impact this fiscal year through the Coronavirus Relief Fund, ESR funds, and everything else. So, just kind of an image for you to understand all of the multiple variables. This is just a recap of some of the state revenue that Enfield receives. The education cost sharing base entitlement, that's where you're going to see the potential Alliance impact.
So, in this slide, we kind of wanted to show that the budget that we adopted last year, FY '22 is the first year of the state's biennial budget. We adopted the budget in April last year, so we kind of held our budget, as far as state revenue, fairly flat from FY '21. And as a result, typically, we would have some growth in this, but it is staying fairly flat. As you can see, the total is only a 0.7% increase in the funding. That is, I made it, decided to hold the education cost sharing down and actually reduce it, because I believe that's how the Alliance District is going to work. We're going to end up with reduced funding for that.
So, moving on to the capital improvement program and the proposed funding sources. At your place, you have the preliminary list that we've created for you to look at. It shows the projects that are being considered for this year, and the funding source by columnists to where we're putting those dollars. The total being proposed is a little over $12 million, which is almost double what has been done before. And again, this is the point where all of these funding sources and opportunities to leverage resources come into play. The school district is entitled to certain funds that are now being available for facility improvements. We have some grant funds that are coming down from the federal government. We have a funding opportunity through the Alliance District funding for school buildings, if in fact that comes to pass. Yesterday, I was on a webinar with Congressman Courtney's office for another set of funding and grant opportunities. So, all of this is something that, when you consider the facility and potential capital improvement needs that we have in this community, this represents a larger number than what this panel has seen in the past. And I think especially coming out of difficult budget years and with uncertainty, there's often a tendency to defer maintenance and to kind of be conservative in how you do that type of fiscal review. However, I think that we need to demonstrate a commitment to our capital program and keep it as even as possible as we plot out the next five years, because we have a lot of need here in Enfield in order to make sure that our level of commitment and quality, whether it's the park system, the annex, some of our own facilities that our employees are in, as well as the general roads and infrastructure are in top shape. Failure to continue that commitment on a yearly basis is going to result in more deteriorating facilities, additional repair costs, and a lot of deferred maintenance, which ends up costing more. Also, with heavy equipment use, when you don't have a vehicle replacement and apparatus replacement schedule, you tend to incur a lot more money in the long run as well, and they're used much past their useful life, which is not a good use of resources as well. So, I'm going to defer this to John. He's our fund balance expert.
So, I believe it was in 2014, the council at the time passed a minimum, a fund balance policy that requires a fund balance of 9% of our operating expenses for the year. Currently, for FY '22, that is at $13,787,920. Okay? Our actual fund balance, based on our audited financial statements from last June, is at $24.7 million. So we have about a $9.6 million excess in our fund balance. And I have some schedules that I could show you at another time, that will show you. We plan to use some of this fund balance to help offset some of the costs that the capital plan will entail over the next few years. But we're not going to plan to use it all in one year, but rather over time.
And the same can be said for our ARPA funds. Some of our preliminary discussions is that we should be holding some of those funds aside for the next fiscal year and potentially, the following fiscal year, which is the year in which they all have to be appropriated by December 30th. So, all of those financial strategies are being discussed as well. This slide obviously represents the general fund revenue, just to keep everybody in the loop, as to the percentage of where we receive those revenues from in order to fund city services and operations. I don't believe that there's been a marked change in what it was from last year, so this still represents an accurate representation of where those funds come from in terms of the revenue discussion. And this would top us out at $146 million and change. So, now with the revaluation discussion behind us, we come to what happens with this year's mil rate. So, we showed some historical data here, and what we're currently looking at, and again, I will stress for the third time, that this is very preliminary. We're doing this so that it's a starting point for your deliberations as you move through this process over the next few weeks. But this, based on what you have in front of you, is where we are for fiscal year '23, which would be a proposed 30.49 mil rate, which is a reduction based on the revaluation. And so we're still looking at what that balance is in terms of taxpayer impact on their property versus a lowered mil rate. So, this is just a very early foray into what that would look like using a home at $200,000, as an example. And we can obviously do these examples for you with different types of values and using other schedules as well. I also would like to reference that, while we're setting our own mil rate, there is also the fact that the Enfield residents have a second mil rate that they need to be concerned with as well, which is that which will come from the Enfield fire districts. Self-taxing districts throughout the town, depending on what neighborhood you live in, residents need to be aware that there will be that second mil rate that is attached to their property as well. So, this is a slide that is interesting. Again, I like to always point something out in a budget that is interesting. I asked Paul Russell from IT to kind of do a look from when the Board of Education and the town started working together on IT. And this represents the Town of Enfield's investment in IT infrastructure, people, and resources over time. And you can see, starting in 2009, the investment as it moves forward to the 2013 proposal. So, salaries and benefits, the technology purchases, and then the blue represents the total cost. Obviously, technology is what fuels a lot of what we're doing here. There's also so many opportunities now, and I think that the impact of technology on local government, on how you deliver services, cannot be overstated. It has resulted in a reduction of actual employees over time, the way we do business. I remember the time when every department in every town hall had a payroll clerk who would manually do payroll every week. So, those types of impacts over the course of the last 25 years, we've seen gradually in budgets, but also with an increased investment in the IT infrastructure. You've heard a presentation from Cindy Garry about the investment in the Apricots data, which is going to now predict and show us where we need to make investments in terms of human capital. We are using ClearGov as part of our interaction with the public. We, actually, Councilman Finger just asked me about the website, which is in the process of being refreshed with Civics Plus, which is the entity that we use for that. The police department owns Drone, which I think is really interesting. And then we have OpenGov, which is coordinating all of our permits and inspections and everything under one IT funnel as well, so that anybody from any department can look up per address what's going on with that. And then obviously, all of you are familiar with the investment that we've made in the EJOC at Alcorn, which is helping every day to fight crime. And I know that that sounds trite in a way, but when you actually hear the police radio and you hear how they're tracking cars because of the camera system in town, or how they're able to go back and look at facial recognition, and the work that they're doing in the schools, makes every dime that's invested in the EJOC work for the taxpayers of Enfield. This is just an extension of what Paul and I talked about today. So what he did is, he looked at the budgets over the same time period. If he used a straight 5% increase for COLA and the Consumer Index, by making no changes to technology processes and performance, they've achieved a total savings of over $5.8 million since fiscal year 2009. So, when you look at the blue line, which would be the potential IT budget, and then their actual budget, that opened up those technology innovations that have come out of IT, how they're helping other departments do their jobs better. That has resulted in $5.8 million that the Town of Enfield is not spending in other areas, which has now been spent someplace else. So, again, I think especially with COVID as that focus, being able to pivot and do more on a technological basis is something that we need to recognize, and I don't think it's going to be changing in the future. So I'm going to turn this portion of the presentation over to the Assistant Town Manager, HR.
Whole alphabet soup of laws that protect them, and we have to navigate through that legal minefield to make sure that we don't violate their rights, and we want to make sure that we want to keep them here, too. So, we spend a lot of time and effort in protecting them, their rights, and then keeping them here. You would think that, because our employees are treated fairly, because of all their rights available to them, that there would be no problem with them staying, but unfortunately, we are competing within the marketplace, with other municipalities, with the state, with the federal government, and even the private sector. Some of these new generation employees, they don't know what a pension is, they don't care what it is, they don't know what health insurance is. All they look at is, what is their weekly paycheck in their end of the week? And that's what we're competing with. I mean, I show them the benefits they get, I try to explain, but sometimes I just go with what gives them the biggest paycheck in another week. So, the things that we've been doing, and we're going to continue to do for keeping our employees, is continue to reduce employee turnover by reevaluating the wages with union and non-union positions. You've seen we've been doing that. We've been putting even a bigger effort with the non-union employees, I mean, yeah, with the non-union employees as we're going forward with the budget, based on recommendations from their directors and also what the marketplace is offering. The union employees, we are handling in contract negotiations, we are listening to their concerns, as we've done in the past, and if there's a deficit for a certain category of employee, the unions won't be screaming about it, I will, because I can't even staff that position. And I've had that before with dispatchers before. I was literally losing people in orientation. They were waiting for an offer from East Hartford, and thankfully, we beat them out because of the new contract. So, that's how it is sometimes. It's catchcan and who's poaching who in this labor market. Vacant positions, the hybrid model, so I'm an example of that. Social services, we just did that when an employee, a long-term employee retired, we combined responsibilities and created another hybrid position. We are trying to be as innovative as possible and efficient as possible in providing the same service level that the residents have come to expect without impacting the budget negatively. In addition, exit interviews. Sure, we do exit interviews. I want to know why employers are leaving. What did we do wrong? Now, of course, if they, we terminate them, we don't do an exit interview. But we've had employees, a few months ago, we had employees work for one hour, and then they left, because they didn't get what they wanted. That one, we couldn't do anything about. But we've had employees, Assistant Town Planner, we have employees work for a few months and they're leaving, they're going to other towns. I want to know, what did we do right? What did we do wrong? Why are we losing people? But better than an exit interview, because exit interview's too late, they're already gone. We're doing stay interviews. When I was at a conference in New Orleans, it's better to go and interview people and talk to them, what is it that we're doing right? How are we doing? Is there something we can do better so we don't lose you? It's unnerving when I hear at a conference that someone almost hired one of our directors and thankfully declined, and I ask that specific director, what is it? What's going on? What? Well, Steve, I just had this, this, and this. We remedied it right then and there, because I didn't want to lose this person. That's how vulnerable we can be. And when I hear, the blessing of being in HR is that the first people that call is me when they're going to other municipalities, because they want to know what type of person they're getting. I do the same thing. So when I hear someone that we're losing someone good, my ears perk up, and I'm going after that person. I don't want to lose you. What can we do to keep you? So that's kind of like a stay interview. Keep them here, stay here. It's a lot more money, trying to track, fill a position, learning curve, do all that. Hire consultants to temporarily offset surges in workloads. As of this morning, John, Ellen, and myself met with a consultant that can help with the purchasing piece that was going to be the onslaught of a lot of projects through ARPA and CIP. We need help, and we don't need permanent help, but we need temporary help. And we interviewed someone that is, I think is going to be a good, it's premature, because it's so early, but we need to identify when there's going to be bottlenecks and workloads, and temporarily fix it to offset those workloads. And that way, we don't burn people out that are permanently in those positions. Invest in our current and future employees by reviewing minimum qualifications. So we've been doing this, there's a few job descriptions that I'm looking at. Some of them have just the mandatory educational requirement without the and/or. When we have someone that has 20 years of experience, you know what? I would sometimes trade that for someone with a college degree, because that's invaluable. There's some positions that I'm looking at, and if they don't meet that criteria, I'll be coming back to you to see how we can do it. Or the most recently, one with waiving a temporary educational requirement for a short period of time. We have to really think outside the box. I know it's a cliche, you hear that all the time, but really, it's, for whatever reason, new generation are not coming to work in the government sector. There's so many other opportunities out there with computers and websites and things they can do, and some people don't want full-time work. They want to just work enough to sustain their lifestyle. I'll do Uber, I'll do Lyft, I'll do whatever, work enough, and I can go hike a mountain for four days. I don't want a house, I don't want assets, I just want to do enough to sustain myself. So this is what we're working against. You know, the old, work 30 years and get your pension, those are few and far between now in this generation. Expanding hiring to include trade schools and local colleges. We heard what you said the other day, and that's a good thought. We have to really explore. We have some ideas that we're working with and really expand upon it, because I think a lot of kids in high school don't even know what they want. They don't know what they don't know. We got to enlighten them, and work with guidance counselors, work with kids that need some direction, and show them that, hey, you can make a career here. We've had employees here that have been 30 years here that started right out of high school, and they've made a thriving career here, and they're doing better than a lot of people that are graduating from college and don't know what they want to do with themselves when they grow up. Lastly, explore internships and apprenticeships for individuals interested in working government. I know a counselor made a good point about, you know, you can't have an apprenticeship if you're a licensed person, but we have to really delve further into that, because we have an auxiliary program with the police, that's kind of like an apprenticeship. Here's what you'd be exposed to. I know UConn has internships, we've had people from UConn come and work with us before. But there's a lot of kids, I guess they're kids, graduated from high school, graduated from college, they still don't know what they want to be when they grow up. And if we can link them to what they can have here in the career they can have, I think that's a good idea. think it'd be a mutually beneficial employer-employee relationship. So that's what I have from my sector. Any questions?
The picture that we chose to showcase tonight is the new conference room here on the ground level of Town Hall. And if, on your way out tonight, if you'd like to peek in to look at it, this was done entirely in-house by our building and grounds crews. It is projected by the Public Works Director to have saved about $50,000 to $70,000 just in labor costs by keeping that in-house, and it came out very well. All of the built-ins that you see were done at the woodshop, and the walls, all that it's waiting for right now is the actual AV hookup. So hopefully, we'll be having some of our meetings in this rejuvenated space very shortly. So moving on to the exciting portion of the presentation, John Wilcox will be leading us through the water pollution control funding aspects of this year's proposed budget.
As you all know, we are currently wrapping up a $36 million project to rehabilitate our water pollution control facility. That project is funded by a $23 million loan from the Clean Water Fund, $5.6 million in grants from the Clean Water Fund. We had a Department of Corrections agreement, $2.5 million, and bonding for the rest of it. And I believe we got, we did also receive some EverSource grants that helped reduce some of the overall cost, so we probably won't need to bond the entire $4.6 million. We have actually issued a few, there's, I think, $3 million of the bonds so far this past year, so there is now some debt service that will be paid out of the Water Pollution Control Fund itself. That project is, like I said, it is nearing completion, and hopefully, we can clear the last hurdles and get that done in the next six months or so. Moving on to the actual operating budget. The budget itself, all right, is a fairly significant increase. It's about a $2.5 million increase, okay? Of that increase, though, the majority, overwhelming majority of it is the debt service itself, okay? It's about $2.2 million of that. Of the $2.2 million, about $1.16 million is the one-time payment to the Clean Water Fund, that's a balloon payment that's due upfront, okay? So that's going to hit this year, and that's going to only hit this year. Going back to the time when we started on this process, but in fiscal year 2014, we converted from an ad valorem tax method of funding the water pollution control facility to a service fee, and there were some growing pains, but that funding has taken us from a negative $3.6 million fund balance at the end of fiscal year 13 to a positive $2.1 million increase in eight years, okay? And now, that's some of that, we are going to use the, some of that, about half of that to help fund that $1.16 million one-time payment. In addition to that, the debt service also includes monthly payments, because they start now on the Clean Water, they will start this coming year on the Clean Water Fund loan. That is a 2% loan over 20 years, so in all, it's a pretty, pretty good deal, but it's, you know, I mean, it's additional costs that have to be paid. The only other item in there, the only other item that increased in that is, we did have an increase in capital of about $600,000, and that's really to add three vehicles that the water pollution control facility needs to help with their operations. They will be replacing some aged vehicles that we have in the town. So our recommendation, the expiring rates, I build in an increase of $3 per quarter to the base rate, and a slight increase in the volumetric charges for that. So that will be a total of about $12 per year, plus some on the volume usage.
So moving forward in terms of the deliberations of how we're looking at how we provide services, there's always room for improvement. So some of the areas that we've identified that we're going to be looking at in the course of the next fiscal year include positioning Enfield by designing the marketing plan to promote all of the assets and attractions in town, and then obviously, pursuing grants. That is a much-needed add for the revenue side, and right now, it's very decentralized. So there are certain people within town government who will pursue grants, but I fear that it's very difficult to calculate lost opportunities. So there needs to be some uniformity brought and accountability in terms of the grants. The one from Congressman Courtney's office is a perfect example. It's a community grant, and it's almost, you know, one that is pretty much guaranteed through his congressional district, but yet it requires this much paperwork, letters of recommendation, all types of attachments, and it's due April 15th. So as I sat through the webinar last night, I'm thinking to myself, where does this fit? Does it fit in economic and community development? Does it fit in planning? Is it this office that's going to write this grant? And frankly, there was no answer. So there needs to be some type of formality in terms of how the town of Enfield structures, how it goes after grants in order to ensure that we're getting our fair share of those dollars that are out there. I also think through everything that's happened over the past several years, that community conversations on diversity, equity, and inclusion are really important. We saw what happened in communities, including here on the town green, following the murder of George Floyd, the Black Lives Matter initiatives, as well as so many other groups who wanted to have their voices heard across the spectrum of this community. So I think there needs to be some type of organized effort to make sure that we're listening to those voices. And then we've already started the process of creating effective economic development strategies. So again, the goal is to retain businesses, recruit businesses, and then assist those businesses that are already here, who may be looking to expand, grow their footprint, do something innovative within their actual business footprint. This is important, too, because again, similar to the grant situation, there is a lot of people who are out doing things, including all of you who serve as ambassadors for the town. But when that information comes back to Town Hall, who's taking the lead? Who's making that business visit to a manufacturer who might be thinking about expanding and having that conversation about whether they're going to expand here, or go to Springfield, or go to Chicopee, or go to East Windsor? Who's having those conversations? We need a voice. Separating out development services from underplanning is going to give us a more focused look at economic and community development, but then the question becomes, do the two staff people in that office have the bandwidth and capacity to do business visits on top of offering discussions about what the incentives are in Enfield? Do we have, are we going to create an abatement policy and follow through with that? Are we going to have other incentives? Are we going to do the small business program through ARPA funds? And what are those parameters? There's a lot of work that has to be done, and again, there's not really a captain of that ship, you know, spearheading all of that. So I think I've looked at that as an area that needs to be tightened up so that, again, we're on the cutting edge of everything that's happening right now in the economy with everyone looking to expand, relocate, and do something in order to make sure we are addressing those needs. There's a lot of talk about a lot of our public health data. We've had some preliminary looks at, you know, even coming off of COVID with reduced doctors' visits, there's still a lot of comorbidities and chronic health conditions present in the community. And then you have the mental health piece, you have the concentration on youth wellness as well as all of the trauma-induced situations that we're seeing in the school system. So the social services in its new role is looking to reinvigorate the Mental Health and Wellness Coalition, and from there, it will be an intergenerational approach across the whole community. And we're looking to make sure that we can support that with all of the resources it needs for the, from young people to families, to the school system, to seniors who may be looking to continue to live independently but may need a little help to do so, or any of the other health and medical spectrum issues that arise. And then obviously, there's the quality of life. Every neighborhood defines it differently, but we are very serious about enforcing quality of life, so that whatever neighborhood you live in, you know that you can come to the town in order to enforce and/or have us take action if there are others in the neighborhood who are not at that same level. This is a complaint-driven process, but I've also seen here that there's a lot of good intentions, but there is no network weaving all of these resources together. So the Property Maintenance Division is now underneath Community Development, which is going to be able to connect them with some of the resources like CDBG funds for people who might need some cleanup or some ADA accommodations in their homes, ramps out front, you know, one-time lawn care to try to keep people at that level. However, you do have quite an arsenal of opportunities for enforcement that have not been affected here. And I think it's because everybody in Enfield is so nice that you always go the extra steps in order to not kind of upset the apple cart. But since I've been here, there's this one house in Thompsonville, and it's starting to fall in on itself. I looked at the file. This has been on the troubled properties radar for 10 years. In other communities, a house like this would have already been condemned with an intent to demolish and most likely demolished, and you have those tools available to you through the state health codes, through your own property maintenance codes, through the state housing codes, through the Fire Marshal's Office, you have the tools. And I encourage you, for the safe and sanitary housing that all people are entitled to live in, that you use those tools. And so we are going to rebrand and regroup on code enforcement, because what you're currently saying to certain neighborhoods is, we know, we know that that's a problem, but we haven't done anything about it. And I think that that is a situation that no matter what neighborhood it's in, and it can happen elsewhere as well, there's always that one house and that one neighborhood that there's issues. So instead of talking about the issue, we need to figure out why it's the way it is, who the owners are, what has been afforded it in terms of resources, why it's not improved, and what we can do. You always get your money back, most of the time, through liens and attachments, but I think it's a very bold statement to say to the other neighbors in those affected neighborhoods that we see it, we're hearing, we hear you, we're listening, and we have the tools available to make this problem go away. So it's unpopular in some cases, some people view it as an infringement of rights, but there are, there is due process, and this due process on this particular property has now gone on for 10 years. And I think it's time to take a stand and have that be the poster child for this town council, the city departments, and all of us affected by quality life issues to say that we believe in Enfield, and we believe that this is a path that we should take in order to ensure that everyone has that quality of life. So those are just some of the goals that we're going to be incorporating as we move forward. As we said, this is our first look, we are presenting a little earlier than what has been done in the past, and we welcome the opportunity, especially from a CIP, ARPA, Leveraging of Resources opportunity, where some of these projects are going to cross starting this year and into July 1st, where the Director of Finance will be able to pair together funding. There's some really great opportunities here, and we're really interested, once you've had an opportunity to digest what we've presented, to get that feedback and really create a budget that everyone is going to be enthusiastic about moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the very detailed delivery of the budget to you, Ellen, our Tommy, and to the staff. Very well put together, I appreciate it. I just had a couple of comments. One, I especially like that you've included what departments have asked for. I think that's very important, so that we, as a council, can look and see what are the people that are steering the ship looking to do on their end. I appreciate that. And then also the line items, thank you so much for including the past proposed, past, you know, actual budget passing, that's important, too. And the only question I have, without going through the whole budget, curiously, we have not received any grant money from the Mashin Tucket, Pequot, or Mohegan. Is, I know it's been a while, is there a reason why we're not getting any funding from them, or grant money, rather?
Those funds come in according to a specific schedule, typically, and I'm not sure what the schedule is on the Mashin Tucket. It's been, it's been a while since I've actually looked at that, so I'd have to get the actual schedules. I know, like, for instance, the ECS funding, I think, comes in in like September, January, and then you get a double payment in April or something like that, but I'm not sure what the actual, the actual schedule for the Mashin Tucket is.
Because you put on here 0%, so I just wondered if there was a reason why.
That is the budget for fiscal year '22 compared to the budget for 2023. According to the biennial budget, it did not, state budget, it did not change the amount of funding.
Okay.
So that 0% is the change from the prior year.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other, Counselor Pisder.
I just have one question, John, if you can just clarify, under the fund balance, you said that there's 9.6 million more than the fund balance requirements. Can we keep that in there, or do we have to use that? If you could just explain that to me, just clarify that.
There is no requirement that we spend it.
Okay.
You know, however, I think in the past, we've found that once the, you know, if the state gets them into some trouble, then sometimes they look towards the company, the communities with higher fund balances to help with that.
Okay, so normally, do we keep that on a higher rate, or do we spend it? I guess that's my question.
We have, it grew a lot more than we probably would have liked it to, so we've kind of kind of making an effort to actually spend down that, but spend it on long-term assets.
Okay.
Okay? Not to fund regular operating expenses, but to try and get things that need to get done. You've got air conditioning, we've got, you know, whatever that we need to actually, there's a lot of projects that are coming in the next five years that hopefully that money can be used towards. Keep in mind, we still have our capital appropriation requirements that are from the charter as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ludwig.
Thanks, John. So I know you do rounding, but the fund balance, I'm doing the math, and I'm showing 10.9 million, not 9.6, based on the presentation? I don't know if you just rounded in the wrong numbers there, but if you do the math, 24.7 minus 13.7 gives you 10.9.
Yes. The difference is that we had, that 24.7 million includes what we had appropriated in the fiscal year '22 budget, okay?
Yeah.
During the budget process, that was, that was already backed out of that 24.7 million dollar number. Since then, we've approved a couple of projects that also were taken out of fund balance.
That's included in that, okay.
And so that's where your difference between that is.
And so that was my other question, too. So you say fund balance after projected expenditures, what will be the actual fund balance? If it's 30 million, then whatever expenditures we've, you know, decided to spend it on, you know, to get to that 24, is, do you have that? I know, because, right, the actual fund balance at one point was higher than that, but we've allocated some money for certain projects. Could we get that by the time, just so people know what the actual true number was, what we've already spent money on, you know, where, and so what do we use?
Right, I have, I have the calculation for.
No problem, just when you get, yeah, I know, that'd be important for people to understand, we actually had a very good year when it comes to collecting taxes.
That's true, yes.
And so we actually already used some of that fund balance, which, again, those goes into when you normally would sit with standard emporers in June and get a bond rating that we've been able to maintain at a very high level, because we're used to, your point is, we're spending money on capital, not spending, not ongoing expenses, which is a big deal.
That's correct.
So, and John, and too, I know this first presentation, with the mill rate, could you also show, so show an example, at that same 200,000 worth, what would be its worth under the, so currently, before revow, I'm just saying, say it was worth 150,000. Could we do the math at the current mill rate, just to make sure some people know, if their house was $150,000, paying a mill of 34.23, now it's 200,000, that they're paying the same rate based on the value of their home? It's important, for me, it's an important example that we need to be able to show people.
Yeah, well, I mean, we should be able to come up with a presentation on that.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thanks. Counselor Desford.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for a great presentation. I definitely share your enthusiasm in investing in our sewer infrastructure. I think that's a really big deal, and I think I will certainly be pushing for some relief in terms of the sewer fund, of the sewer fee. I think we have some money available where we can make some changes there, and that's what I'll certainly be focused on and pushing for. Thanks.
So I think we talked about this at one of the previous meetings. The beauty of the ARPA funding is that it does not confine itself to this fiscal year or next fiscal year. It is fluid. So in terms of the sewer infrastructure that we've been talking about, the original presentation from last fall pegged it at about $4 million, which would take care of a lot of the pump station upgrades. We are still looking at that very seriously in terms of the ARPA piece, but we did not want to confuse items tonight with putting too much into this, because ARPA is out there, but it's not necessarily connected to the budget presentation tonight. But it's something that is going to be able to augment a lot of what you're talking about in terms of concerns and impact to taxpayers long-term.
Deputy Mayor Scala.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike, for asking that about the mill rate, because I was going to ask the same thing. If we could get a couple of different values on a couple of different houses on, you know, their house is worth something different now than it was, they're going to see a mill rate, and then they're going to go, well, why is there not a proportioned difference in what my taxes are going to be? So if we can get some of those numbers, that would be great. Is this going to be online?
So we finished it at about 5:14 PM this afternoon, so yes, we could put it online. My hesitation is that this is fluid.
That it's a rough...
And I'm worried that someone's going to walk out of here or view it and say, they're increasing the budget by 3%. It is not an accurate representation, which is why we hesitated a little bit to do the comparisons, because without the final mill rate, it's hard to do the comparison. That tenuous balance between revaluation and what someone was paying on their house versus what they're going to pay July 1st is something that we'd like to spend a little bit more time, making sure we understand it, so that we can give you accurate numbers in terms of what this budget looks like and what those mill rates mean.
Right. So I guess my question in asking if it was going to go on the website is exactly this. We understand, because you've said it three or four times in your presentation, that this is sort of draft one, run one, we're going to deliberate, and people understand that there's a deliberation process anyway, and a proposed budget's not always what we pass. But with something like this, because people are going to say, they're going to see an increase, whatever it is, not everybody, but some people see an increase and go, why isn't just ARPA fund doing all of that? Why is there going to be an increase in my, you know, in my mill rate or my taxes? So if we do put this on there, if there can be some sort of blurb...
Disclaimer.
Disclaimer, sort of exactly what you've said several times to us, that would be very helpful for people who are going to follow along, because some people will come in and take a budget book. And I do think if we don't have budget books available, we probably should make them available to some people in hard copies, because I do know members of the public do come in.
Yeah, I think that that's exactly what we need to accomplish before we go live with this.
Okay.
Or even, I'm going to talk with ETV about putting a disclaimer as it's viewed.
Yeah.
What's also equally important is that you've all heard it numerous times, because you're immersed in it, but you cannot use ARPA funds to reduce a tax burden in a community. So yes, it sounds great on paper, but you cannot use those funds. These funds are for one-time transformational use in order to accomplish mostly, you know, big projects.
Projects, right.
So we have to make that clear, too, so that people understand that balance. So there's a lot of pieces at play, which is why we structured the presentation tonight the way that we did, so that all of that is very clear to you as you begin your phase.
Right. No, and I appreciate that. So I have probably a lot of comments and questions, but after we review this and start our deliberations, I'm sure I'll get to them all. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
So I just meant to ask this question, John. The zero on the health increase, though, is, it's a good thing, because we're also, from a stop-loss, you know, issue, we're more protected than we ever have been in the last, I think, six years. So it's a zero increase, but the good news is, from, you know, protection against catastrophic claims, which is what stop-loss protects, we've rebuilt that fund over a number of years. So, I mean, I know it's inside baseball, but it's a good number, because, again, it's allowing us to also have some healthy reserves in case there are catastrophic claims, which, again, can happen, you know, in any given year, especially on a population size that we have, where one catastrophic claim can really throw off your trend. So, I mean, it's, there's some perspective to that zero.
That's correct.
Right.
Yes, the medical insurance is, we're what they call self-insured.
Right.
So we pay our own claims, and to pay those claims, you know, we charge the employees and the budgets of the town as part of it. That fund balance was, we had, like you said, a couple of catastrophic claims over the last probably two or three years. The fund balance had gotten depleted, and then that's why this year, there was a large increase in the rates, and it's helped replenish that fund balance. We're back up to, you know, positive, and have a fairly healthy fund balance, so that when, you know, something like that happens again. And these rates are actually based from our, from our healthcare consultant, who has analyzed what the claims have come in over the past year, and projected forward with increases in claim processing costs, increases in medical costs, prescription costs, factor where we, what we need in order to have enough money in our, in order to charge enough to cover our claim costs for next fiscal year.
All right. And again, I know you've, you know, your staff have done a great job managing a very difficult, again, it's a fluent population. It's not as big as we like, where we can have some more, you know, the law of large numbers protects you. We're kind of in that little in-between, and it's nice to be able to feel a little bit safer, for lack of a better word, where we have some protection. Case, again, in normal, normal human history, someone can have a claim that really throws off your trend.
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I think the presentation is very, very thorough. It's, I'm pretty impressed with all the different aspects that were presented to us as a council, and I know that this is a work in progress. We will be, you know, doing our deliberations. There's one thing, maybe if we could have maybe just a bit, a narrative, John, in regard to our water pollution control, because when people see the, that increase of 2.4 million, if you just, if we could maybe explain the reason why, you know, you know, that one-time payment, so that people know exactly, you know, this is the reason why. And then that 2% loan over the 20 years with the additional monthly payments, because when you take a look at that, and you say, and you just look at that, an increase of, you know, 37%, people are going to go, whoa. You know, they're going to, you know, they're going to, they're going to get all riled up over that. And, you know, we've been through, through this before with the deficit, and I know that we've made great gains in doing that. And then also in regard to the volumetric uses charges, you know, and then it would be the increase of $12 over the course of the year. If we just have a narrative, just explaining that, so that, you know, when somebody sees it, they can visually understand or comprehend much better than that. The other thing that I was quite impressed with this is, you know, working to improve our town of Enfield with these goals. I think that's very important for everybody to understand the vision that we are going to be moving forward as a community. So I think that is real, real important. You know, all the bullet points that were, you know, stated on that, and so, thank you for mentioning that, and that bottom statement, the quality of life in the neighborhoods. And I think that will get the community together, that if they do see something, or if there's some properties that need attention, that they're not going to just sit back and just, jeez, I wish I said something a couple of years ago, or a year ago, that they'll be more proactive in doing that. So code enforcement, I think, is a huge, huge factor. I also like the community conversation on, you know, the diversity, equity, and inclusion. You know, that is definitely needed in this, in our town. So thank you for, you know, bringing this to everybody's attention, and I think the presentation was outstanding, and looking forward to getting down to business and deliberating with the work of the mill rate and, you know, finalizing that up. And so, everybody really worked really hard, all the department heads, and all the presentations that we had last week through today, very professional, and thank you for that.
So I would just like to thank the, all of the department heads as well, but especially the finance staff. We've been really working hard to pull all this together, and especially Heather McCarthy in our office, along with Deb McCarthy, worked hard to make sure that we had everything ready to print in conjunction with John's staff. And also, many of them have already been distributed to you, but what you're also going to see in the budget books this year is a return to department heads having that look back and look ahead. So we're asking them to delineate their accomplishments, but also talk about their goals. And again, from a data collection standpoint, we're going to be holding them accountable to how their departments are performing against those standards, so that we know that the money that they're asking for, especially new money, new positions, all of that, is being directly related to those accomplishments and the goals.
Thank you very much. Thank you to Steve, John, greatly appreciate it. To Ellen, thank you. If there's no further questions, I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Counselor Figer and his second, Counselor Mangini, show by a raise of hands. All in favor? 10 in favor. Meeting adjourned. Have a nice evening, everyone.